Ryan?
Ryan is the other guy.
You're good, you're recording? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can we stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Of course, it just decides to rain when we're all leaving our houses and have to walk in here, right? Get a nice little storm. But hopefully it'll cool things off instead of make things hotter like the last ones. So I'm going to move on. I don't have a report tonight, so we'll move to public participation. I understand there's a couple people here for public participation, so I'm going to ask if anyone's here and would like to speak to please come up, state your name and address for the record, just one at a time. You can draw straws or duke it out. State your name. You have a seat, ma'am.
Oh, set.
Yep. State your name and address for the record and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Assis. My name is Megan Canetta Garrity, and I live at 63 Doris Drive here in Monroe. And I am both a mom and an educator in the Monroe District. During the 2020-21 school year, my daughter benefited from an alternative education program under the guidance of Victor Alfandre and Pat Petrie. While I was working to support my kindergarten students and their families during a pandemic, my own 15-year-old learner was in crisis. She needed a cushion.
Go ahead.
She needed a cushion from stressors, including classes, peers, teachers, deadlines, and family. A simple trip to the cafeteria could cause her to have a panic attack. Both Alf, Mr. Alfandre, and Pat got to know my daughter and learned how to support her. My daughter has communicated with me about the feelings of safety she experienced while she was a student in the ALT program. Pat and Victor, along with their support staff, use their pedagogical expertise to support Monroe School citizens. Their student population has varied and complex needs, and our district has entrusted them to support students as they work toward mastery of standards. If program changes are being made that do not align with the pedagogical ideals of the experts, then the decision-makers should reconsider. I'm hopeful that a standalone program, independent from MASIC, will continue to save kids in crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, who would like to come up? Come on up. Hi.
Hello. I'm Kyla Garrity, and I was a student at Alternative from 2020 to 2023. Alternative provided a home to me and so many kids who didn't feel like they had one, a safe space with staff that cared about them and a less demanding pace of education with more room for emotional healing and discovery. The mainstream high school likes to think that they're wasting resources on us, on people who are a presumed burden and may never change. While I haven't taken the traditional route, I work a full-time job that is both physically and mentally challenging, that I've held for close to three years. I'm respected and have skill and authority in my field. If I hadn't been in ALT, I highly doubt I would have anything of the sort to share. Almost three years post-grad, I still look back at my time in ALT and long for just one more day of that life. ALT provided me with the most comfort, community, and stability in a time where almost everything was uncertain for me. I remember when I was in middle school, a girl in Jockey Hollow committed suicide. The school added extra counselors and time to process and grieve because it was unfathomable how somebody so young could do that. I wonder if they would have a memorial if every one of us who needed extra support may not have carried on. I wonder if they'd act as if they provided sanctuary to us instead of opting to get rid of it. When something ugly happens, it gets treated as a temporary problem before things go back to the unforgiving way they always were. I had a friend my freshman year admit to me that he thought I was the one who killed themselves back in middle school before anybody found out who it was. That was how I was perceived. That was what people expected I would end up doing. And if I didn't have the community of Alternative in time, they would have been right. By taking away Alternative entirely, you are further sweeping an unsightly issue that is so uncomfortable for you to even acknowledge under the rug. It is so like this town's educational system that has failed both me and countless family and friends over the years to try and brush away what isn't the norm and be inhumane to those who have already been subjected to failure of the system. Putting down the lens of humanity and looking at it from a financial view, it does not cost much to run a program with two teachers that are paid the exact same salary as traditional educators and a counselor. By trying to further condense the special education programs in the school, you'll end up outplacing students who would have actually benefited from Alternative. You'll exhaust teachers and resources and end up back at square one, wasting tax money on trying to fix something that was originally broken by you. Through the years this plan has been thrown around, I cannot believe there are still attempts being made to cut the program. These are teachers that put down their own extra time and money to try and keep the most effective program and location in operation. It breaks my heart to still see us fighting for a right that had no reason to be taken away. I hope that our points that we still must echo will finally be heard.
Thank you. Good evening. Just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Don Hutchinson, and I live at 68 Rockwood Lane in Monroe, where I have been a resident here in Monroe for 47 years. I'm here tonight to support the need for additional funding to the alternative education program versus downsizing some of the funding, perhaps restructuring the program and/or changing, eliminating the potential of the positions of Mr. Alfandre and Mr. Petrie, who have been extremely instrumental in the success of this much-needed program in the past and hopefully moving forward as well. Instead of cutting the budget, honestly, this is an area educationally that should be increased with funding, and let me tell you why. The alternative program turns students' lives around, and very, very possibly, it's a program that also saves lives. Mr. Alfandre and Mr. Petrie go out of their way personally, teaching students in need to successfully complete all required courses in order to graduate from MASIC. These students are faced with various challenges in life, including anxiety, depression, and so on. Anxiety and depression are real. We all have heard this for years. It's all over the TV on a daily basis, and it's 100% the truth. The alternative program is an option for them. It's an alternative, and many of us throughout our lives have had options and alternatives. This is one of them, and it has a proven successful track record. The alternative program has worked for many students, as I've said, who have issues of this nature and then some. The students are not failures. They are not the bad news bears. They are individuals simply who need full-time direction, help, compassion, guidance, mentors, leadership, and to be helped by professionals such as Mr. Alfandre and Mr. Petrie in order to help and walk them through taking all the coursework that students are required to complete before graduation. My granddaughter Emily is a perfect example as to how successful this program is under their tutelage. Emily, who lived with us, I am her grandfather, for most of her middle school and high school years and prior to being offered an opportunity to be part of the alternative program, she hated going to school. Her anxiety about attending normal-sized classes was extreme. Her mother Brooke, who also lived with us, obviously, basically had to drag her to school. And actually, Emily was put on probation for missing so many days of school.
Continue, sir.
That's okay. Due to the anxiety building up, which then becomes a degree of depression. It was building inside her, and it wasn't until she attended MASIC that her life was turned around 180 degrees. She was offered to attend the alternative education program, and as family members, trust me, initially, we were very skeptical. We didn't want Emily to be with the wrong crowd. I personally was told by Mr. Cobza, "Don, trust me, this is an excellent program for the right students, and it's not for the very troubled." Well, after her first day, Emily probably never missed a day of school unless she was sick. Emily felt safe, understood, and felt a solid connection with Mr. Alfandre and Mr. Petrie and others who were part of the program. This program was such a success in her life, Emily actually graduated one year early as a junior from MASIC High School, and she was accepted to UConn Storrs Campus the following year and is currently an honor student and will graduate UConn this coming year. And now her goal is to obtain her doctorate in mental health in order to also guide young students and help change their lives as well. Mr. Alfandre had Emily write a letter to himself and the family stating, "Why do you want and why do you think you are ready to leave MASIC one year early?" Three weeks later, I called him. I said, "Well, no letter. Give it time," he said. Two days later, here comes the letter. He said she did an unbelievable job. Anyway, they taught Emily to believe in herself, how to work through her anxiety, how to deal with the challenges in high school that high school might present, and of course, educationally, how to succeed. This program should not be decreased in funding. Victor and Patrick should be running the program full-time as they have in the past and allow them to change and possibly save the lives of many students, such as Emily, moving forward. Trust me, if any of you had a child struggling emotionally or otherwise, or if you have witnessed someone who has struggled emotionally or otherwise, you would raise your hand tonight for the additional funding and certainly do not take the funds away. And lastly, the alternative program is a success because of these two professionals, first and foremost because the program should be expanded and the town can help more students now and moving forward. Please keep this program up and running successfully full-time for many years to come. Please keep Victor and Patrick running the program. They have spent their entire careers turning this program into the success story it is and has been in the past. Please do not turn your back on the youths in need of the alternative program built by them. Thank you for realizing how important this program is for the youth in need within our community. Thank you also for your time and listening to what I had to say. And lastly, Victor and Patrick, from the bottom of my heart, I cannot thank you, and I thank you for everything you did for Emily. Without your guidance and help, she wouldn't be the success story she is today. And I pray the Board of Ed continues to financially support your program 100% full-time for years to come. I thank you again. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi. My name is Brooke Hutchinson, 68 Rockwood Lane. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight as a deeply grateful mother of Emily Corna. I want to speak from the heart about something that means more to me than I could pull into words, the alternative program at MASIC High School. There was a time when she was barely hanging on. Traditional school just didn't work for her, and she was slipping through the cracks. She felt alone, overwhelmed, and invisible. And as her mom, I felt helpless. I was scared, not just about her education, but about her future. Then we found the alternative program. I honestly believe it saved her life. This program met her where she was. The teachers, Victor Alfandre and Patrick Petrie, didn't just treat her like another student. They saw her, truly saw her. They listened, they guided her, they believed in her when she had stopped believing in herself. And because of that, she started to grow again. My daughter found hope. She found motivation. She started showing up, not just physically, but emotionally and mentally as well. Little by little, she became the person I always knew she could be. Today, she is a successful student at the University of Connecticut. She has a future she's proud of and a heart that's full of confidence. And I know without a shadow of a doubt that it is because of the alternative team. This program gave her what she so deeply needed: patience, understanding, structure, and hope. The staff didn't just look at her grades or attendance, they looked at her as an individual. They saw her potential even when she couldn't herself. They believed in her, supported her, challenged her, and walked with her every step of the way. But here's what hurts. There are people who still look down on the alternative program, think it's for troubled kids or that it's less than the traditional path. That couldn't be further from the truth. This program isn't a failure, it's a solution. It's not a last resort. It's often the first real chance a student gets to feel understood, valued, and capable. The students who come through this program aren't lost causes. They're kids who need a different kind of support, a different environment, and staff willing to meet them where they are, and that's exactly what this program provides. The alternative program at MASIC changes lives. I've seen it firsthand, not just in my daughter, but in so many other students who found their strength, their voice, and their future here. So if anyone questions the value of this program, I urge you to look at students it's lifted up, the families it's held together with, and the lives it's helped turn around, including my daughter's. And that is because of the people behind it. The staff, including Victor Alfandre and Pat Petrie, and the alternative program work harder than most people will ever understand. They give everything they have to these students day in and day out with compassion, patience, and unwavering commitment to helping these succeed. They change lives. I've seen it. I've lived it. Unless you've experienced it firsthand, one can't even imagine how difficult it is to see your child struggle to even walk into the school building since elementary school. Having to push your hurting child because you were given no other option was beyond devastating and took a toll even on me as a mother. Many comments were thrown at my daughter by MASIC High School administrators. She was once told her choice was either attending school or the hospital. This was a statement made by a vice principal at the time. After years of fighting and advocating for my daughter, we were finally told about the alternative program. Getting rid of the program or mainstreaming it into MASIC will destroy the alternative program as a whole. This is devastating to hear that this is even being discussed as if the students within the alternative program don't matter. It's like being thrown to the wolves. I hope this community continues to support this program the way it deserves because it is absolutely vital. And from the bottom of my heart to every single person who has poured into my daughter and into so many others, thank you. You didn't just help her, you brought her back to life. To the board, the administration, and anyone involved in this decision, I urge you, please, listen to the voices of the parents, the students, and the educators who have lived the truth of this program. Do not let it become a casualty of budget cuts, misconceptions, or convenience because these kids do matter. My daughter mattered, and this program gave her her life. To the alternative team at MASIC, I cannot thank you enough for changing the course of my daughter's life, and thank you for doing the same for others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Go ahead. My name is Emily Corna, 68 Rockwood Lane. Good evening, members of the board, educators, and guests. My name is Emily Corna, and I want to sincerely thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. I'm here to share something deeply personal, something that changed the course of my life. During high school, I was part of an alternative education program offered in our district. To be honest, it's hard to overstate that this program has sincerely saved my life. Before I entered the program, I was struggling emotionally and personally. I didn't feel like I fit in the traditional school setting, and I felt lost and visible and overwhelmed. But the alternative program provided me a place where I wasn't just another student. I was seen, supported, and encouraged. The teachers, Victor Alfandre and Patrick Petrie, as well as other staff in the program, didn't just care about my grades. They cared about me as a person. They listened, they checked in, and they believed in me when I couldn't believe in myself. That kind of support isn't just educational, it's transformational. I also found a community, friends who understood what I was going through, and for the first time, I didn't feel alone. I felt like I belonged, and when you feel like you belong, everything changes. You begin to see a future for yourself, and you begin to fight for that future. This program didn't just help me graduate, it helped me grow. It gave me the tools and confidence to move forward, and I can say with confidence, I wouldn't be sitting here without that program and the people behind it. As we face the difficult reality of budget cuts for the upcoming school year, I want to speak honestly about the risks and why we must protect essential programs like the alternative program. Cutting the alternative program would directly impact the students who need us the most. These are optional services. They are life-changing supports that help students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Every dollar we save by cutting this program could come at a much higher cost to student well-being, staff burnout, and our community's trust in us. I know every department is being asked to make sacrifices, but some programs, especially those that serve vulnerable learners, should be the last place we look to cut. If we cut our alternative programs, the students don't just go away, the costs just shift, and we may need to place students in out-of-district programs, which are often significantly more expensive. We risk the loss of critical relationships and progress that these students have made through consistent specialized support. This isn't just about numbers, though. It's about lives. The alternative program we've built has changed lives, and it has provided safety, stability, and a sense of belonging for students who may not have succeeded in a traditional setting. These programs aren't extras, they are lifelines. Through the support of this very program, I found my sense of self, which led me to graduating MASIC a year early with immaculate grades and led me to having the opportunity to apply to college, which I never felt was possible. Today, I'm proud to share that I'm a student at the University of Connecticut Storrs Campus, maintaining a 3.7 GPA. That achievement wouldn't have been possible without the foundation that this program gave me. The confidence, structure, and hope I gained there have carried me through every challenge I've faced since. Looking forward, my goal is to earn a doctorate and become a therapist specializing in addiction, trauma, and grief counseling. I want to give back what was given to me, to help others who are struggling know that healing is possible and that they are not alone. That's why I'm here tonight, to ask you to continue supporting and investing in alternative education programs, because there are still students out there like I was, bright, capable, and hurting, just waiting for someone to truly save them. These programs don't just help students graduate, they save lives. Thank you for your time, and thank you for believing in programs that truly make a difference.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Lindsay Collis, 50 Meadowbrook Drive.
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Collis, and I graduated from Monroe Alternative in 2022. I was moved to the alternative program during my freshman year after struggling with poor attendance, serious mental health challenges, and severe bullying. At one point, I was even outplaced to the CES building in Trumbull due to the severity of my condition, but that placement only made things worse. I returned to Monroe Alternative, which is where I remained until graduation. For the first time in a long time, I felt seen, heard, and supported. I wasn't just a number in a system, I was a person worth believing in. Teachers like Victor Alfandre and Pat Petrie never gave up on me even when I had lost hope in myself. Their dedication and the structure of the alternative program are a part of the reason that I'm standing here today, I guess, sitting. I finally found a place where I was not just accommodated, I was supported, and I was understood. I was given the chance to heal, to grow, and to learn in an environment designed for students like me. This program saved my life. Prior to Alternative, I was constantly belittled, excluded, and felt unsafe. I felt unseen and invisible, but within the alternative program, I found a place where I was safe, respected, and cared for. That program gave me stability, safety, and a sense of belonging that I never found before, gave me the tools, the confidence, and the space I needed to succeed. Without it, I would not be where I am today, as an honor student at UConn studying psychology and working towards a future I once thought was impossible. I went from being someone who felt invisible and broken to someone with a future, and this didn't happen by accident. It happened because of this program. Taking away the standalone alternative program won't be saving money. It'll be costing students their education, their well-being, and in some cases, even their lives. It'll be taking away a place that gives students like me a fighting chance, a place where we're not just tolerated, but we're understood and supported. I urge you to think not just in terms of budgets, but in terms of outcomes. Cutting the standalone program may seem like a financial decision, but it carries a deep human cost. It removes an educational structure that works for some, for some of the district's most vulnerable students, students like me who otherwise might have fallen through the cracks. You're not saving resources, you're risking futures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My name is Sean Riley. I live in 92 Oak Colony Road, and I graduated MASIC 2023. I'm gonna start off by saying, my life would be completely different if not for Alternative. I'll be honest, in sophomore, junior year, I thought I was going nowhere in life. I was just a plain loser, had no ambition for my future. Now, after Alternative, I'm one of the first people in my graduating class that has their associate's degree. I was the kid at MASIC that no one ever thought would get clean. I was the kid that'd go to school high every day. I'm completely clean now, haven't smoked anything in a while, and I'm enlisting, leaving in October to go join the Marines. That's all thanks to that guy back there and Pat. I would not be anywhere. If my dad could be here right now, unfortunately, it was my stepmom's 50th, he could go on for hours about how thankful he is for that guy. I wouldn't be the person I would be today without the alternative program. And the fact that you guys want to take it away or take away the funding, I think you guys are gonna really have some kids miss out on a great opportunity. And I didn't really plan that much, but that's all I got.
All right. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you for your future service.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hi. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Dave Trow, 75 Great Ring Road. Coach Cobza, Mr. Stevens, how are you? I don't even recognize you anymore, man. You look great. You look great. One second. So I am a MASIC alumni, an alternative school alumni, and a licensed master of social work. Coach Cobza and Mr. Stevens can attest to what it was like to work with me before entering the alternative program. They can confirm where I was expected to be before the program's intervention. After the support and intervention that I received at the alternative program from Deb Simmons, may she rest in peace, Pat Petrie, and Victor Alfandre, who went far above and beyond their job descriptions to help, I was able to turn my life around. I went from community college to earning my bachelor's degree, then my master's, and my social work license. I went from the student that teachers would least like to have in class, and I do truly want to apologize to some of you for that. I was one of those troubled kids. I'm not proud of it. I'm very sorry. If it was not for the intervention that I received, I think that really speaks to how difficult their job is to work with someone like me. But, so yeah, I went from the student that teachers would least like to have in class to completing a 60-page graduate thesis on the effectiveness of alternative education programs, one that I wrote to prevent things like this from happening, that I would be happy to submit to the board if it's of any use. If you take away this program, you will be reducing the support to the town's most vulnerable students. You will be creating a strain on the school staff that will detrimentally impact the quality of education provided to all of the students in the MASIC community, one that can be easily avoided by simply continuing to pay two teachers a regular salary to continue doing what they have done their entire lives, supporting and educating the most difficult students who have ever lived in this community. I believe you will be doing a great disservice to this community if you follow through with this decision. We all deserve the chance that I was given. Please do not take it away from the current and future children of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
How are you?
Go ahead.
Victor Alfandre, Monroe teacher, always an alternative teacher from 1997 to the present day. Chairman Ferris.
Address.
Oh, 125 Deerfield Drive, Eastern, Connecticut. I do not live in Monroe. Chairman Ferris, Superintendent Cobza, the rest of the board. On May 22 of this year, Pat and I were abruptly notified that, quote, "We will continue to have alternative programming, but we will no longer have a standalone alternative program." We were shocked. It was the second significant alteration, and I will say insult, to what we have done, the first being moving us up into the building and taking away the individual space that we had. I understand budget constraints. I get it. But there are other ways of dealing with it. What the current model is doing is reducing alternative to a basket of services, to something that is supplemental, and that is not what it is to be in its most effective form. Alternative education programs are not just supplements, they are essential lifelines for students whose needs cannot be met in traditional school environments. with it. What the current model is doing is reducing alternative to a basket of services, to something that is supplemental, and that is not what it is to be in its most effective form. Alternative education programs are not just supplements, they are essential lifelines for students whose needs cannot be met in traditional school environments. From chronic absenteeism, mental health crises, and explosive behaviors, to complex home lives involving incarceration, food insecurity, addiction, and caregiving responsibilities, to name a few, these students face overwhelming barriers to success. Kids we've had in the program this year, of the 20 kids who came through our doors this year, four are living with caregivers who are not their biological parents, six are girls who have suffered extensive sexual violence, one of those was trafficked, five are on the LGBTQ spectrum, two had mothers who were murdered, five who have been hospitalized or institutionalized for a suicide attempt, and four with an identified substance use disorder. That's of the 20 kids we got this year. The list could go on. And of those 20 students, only one was outplaced to a therapeutic day program, only one. In each case, past and present, the alternative program at Masick High School provided not just academic support, but safety, connection, and personalized guidance, preventing costly outplacements and avoiding dropouts. Without this program, many of these students would have likely been lost to the system, resulting in long-term economic and social costs for the district. Countless alternative graduates are now mechanics, plumbers, electricians, veterans, landscapers, hairdressers, and barbers, as well as nurses, graduate students, media specialists, event planners, therapists, and teachers. At the micro level, the alternative program transforms individual lives, helping struggling students graduate, find stability, and become productive members of society. At the macro level, it supports the larger school community by reducing disruption, lowering outplacement costs, and strengthening family engagement. Its loss would not only strip away a crucial support structure for the most vulnerable students, it would place a greater burden on the general education settings ill-equipped to serve them, ultimately diminishing the district's ability to meet the needs of all learners. The newly proposed alternative programming classroom, the academy, while perhaps well-intentioned, fundamentally lacks the critical components that have made the traditional alternative programs so successful in supporting at-risk students. By removing the consistency of dedicated staff and stable peer groups, and expecting students, many of whom struggle with emotional regulation, trauma, and executive functioning as described above, to adhere to a traditional schedule that includes block days and mainstream routines, we've, by the way, removed their early bus, which helped them maintain themselves in the building, that is no longer there, as well. The model ignores the very reasons these students were referred to alternative education in the first place. The alternative program's strength has always been in its ability to provide a predictable, supportive, and flexible environment tailored to each student's needs. Stripping away that cohesion and individualized structure will inevitably leave many students without the interventions they need to remain in school and succeed. This shift will almost certainly lead to higher dropout rates and a costly increase in out-of-district placements. Both outcomes the alternative program has long worked to prevent through its targeted, relationship-based approach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public participation, sir?
Hi, how are you? Have a seat, go ahead.
I'm Rob Cronin, I live at 90 Bagburn Hill Road here in Monroe. I'm not quite as adept at public speaking as many of the people that I'm following, but I'm gonna give it a shot. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about myself and my daughter, who recently graduated from Masick High School this year. We're very proud of her, and we are incredibly thankful for the amazing teachers and staff that guided her and the other young minds in the alt program as a standalone here in Masick High School. That program has been invaluable to my family, to many others in this community. We chose this town about 15 years ago because we wanted a quiet life and a solid community to, a place where we knew people had similar values as we did, to raise our child. I'm a veteran, served 10 years as a special ops medic, I'm a respiratory therapist, I'm a trauma nurse, I know about serving our community. The most important job I've ever had is being a father. I have one child, I'm very fortunate to have her. She's an amazing young lady, my daughter is charming, she's well-spoken, she's brave, she's kind, she's very intelligent. She also happens to be someone who struggles with social settings. She has social anxiety, and at times, it leaves her incapable of functioning, as a normal vibrant young lady normally would. Within the classrooms of the standalone alternative program at Masick High School, guided by the very talented gentleman that you see here, as well as Pat, the adept instructors, and some amazing teachers and adjunct staff, my daughter and the rest of the socially awkward at times, yet very bright minds, found a safe place where they were able to openly participate and to thrive. During my daughter's time here, in a well-meaning attempt by the Masick High School staff to expand her social interactions, my daughter was pushed into the classroom in the mainstream Masick arena. During that time, she was often left unable to participate academically or socially, even at home, on any level, for days. She and many of the other alternative student body have very short-lived social batteries. The overstimulation caused by being pressed into the mainstream student body has ramifications that will manifest in a multitude of ways. Many of the students have difficulty properly expressing themselves or their feelings. I have witnessed my vibrant young lady of, my daughter, vibrant young lady, within the standalone alternative program, go from being that vibrant person to being someone who was confused, depressed, and feeling hopeless. She became despondent, and that quite frankly frightened myself, and frightened my wife, and frightened our daughter. The population of socially awkward and neurodivergent children is growing, unfortunately. This is just a reality. We can cite many reasons as root causes, but the honest answer is, we don't really know why this is happening, not definitively, but here we are. It is happening. And allowing these neurodivergent children to have a program like the standalone alternative classrooms at Masick, with educators who are trained for and dedicated to working with these amazing young students, where they can feel safe to get the education they deserve, is ultimately important. I want to thank Pat, I want to thank Alf for the work they've done with my child. Without this program, I don't know that she would have graduated, I don't know where she would be right now, but forcing these kids back into the mainstream is not the proper answer. It's not gonna bode well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Marie?
Mine's a different topic.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Marie, go ahead.
Sorry about that.
We know Marie well enough, but go ahead.
Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. I'm here to talk about the facility study. First of all, I want to thank everyone who served on the committee. Your thoughts, your effort, and your time are greatly appreciated. I am in favor of reopening Chalk Hill. I did go there as a student many moons ago, as well as teach there many moons ago, and it is a great building. I hope that it can be brought to life again. I do believe it is the best option for the future of Monroe's educational vision. I am excited by the thought of developing a therapeutic day program that has the potential to generate revenue. And after listening to the presentations and looking at all of the information, my concern right now is with portable classrooms. I am hoping to hear more about them, especially if they will be needed next year at Fawn Hollow, if I was correct in reading all the schematics in the reports. So my concerns are, are we going to rent versus buying? How long do we expect to have to use them? More importantly, maintenance of them with regard to weather, drainage, ventilation, temperature control, fear of mold, and what costs are associated with that maintenance? From my own research online, I realized that they need a lot of special maintenance, and a lot of cost is in conjunction with that maintenance. And then, oh, and security as well. I've never been in a portable classroom, so I don't know if the doors open up to the inside of the building or to the outside. I was just, I was just thinking about security as well. And then, with regard to staff and students, how do we make those who have to be using them feel included rather than excluded? And that's gonna be a lot to think about. So I look forward to hearing more discussions about all of this, and about decisions that the board will be making, and I especially am looking forward to hearing all of your thoughts about everything. I understand the next meeting is in two weeks, and that's when you're, are you just, the 28th, is that when you're discussing the facilities on the, yeah, okay. I won't be able to be here for that meeting, but, I don't know, I'll try to watch it live, okay? But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? No? Okay, thank you very much, everybody, we appreciate your feedback and your thoughts. Thank you. I'm gonna move forward with the consent agenda. Do any board members have any questions on the minutes that were posted for the last two meetings, I believe? No? Okay, moving to approval of warrants, any questions on any of those warrants in our packet? Okay, hearing none. Budget transfers, there were many, self-explanatory, any questions on that for Joe or Ron? Okay, any questions for Joe on any of the hires? Joe, you've gone over many of the new hires and their qualifications, 10 of them listed in our, our agenda for tonight.
We're very excited, central office remains very busy during the summer as we're onboarding people. Mike is preparing the new teacher orientation for August 20th and 21st, and as always, we'll invite them in to come in for that first meeting in September to meet all of you. There's a lot of ties to Monroe, which is kind of exciting, we have, we've got some folks that live in town, and actually some alumni and whatnot that are, that are coming back to join us, so we're very excited for that.
Joe, have you filled all the gaps?
We have four positions.
Four left to fill?
After tomorrow, it'd be three. We're meeting with candidates tomorrow.
Yep, yep. Okay, good news. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, seconded by Jerry, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor. Unanimous, thank you very much, motion passes. Any board members have any reports on committees? Moving to reports committees, I know you policy met tonight, right? We'll talk about that a little more later.
She'll be giving a presentation.
Yep.
About it, so.
Okay, any other board members have reports of committees? Okay, hearing nothing further, we're gonna move to the report of the superintendent, Joe.
Yeah, first one is just the two fund activity statements. If anyone had any questions for Ron, for Mayor June?
Nope.
The next is just the proposed year-end budget transfer. You'll see in the, in the fiscal year 25, year-to-date budget report after proposed budget transfer, that will have, we're anticipating approximately $130,000 remaining at year end. With year-end spend, we were able to cover the retirements, as well as some maintenance projects throughout the district's principles, we're able to pre-purchase some supplies and equipment, knowing that we absorbed a pretty significant adjustment for this upcoming year. That $130,000 balance will also, also includes covering any special ed overages that we experienced this year. We don't expect that $130,000 to change too much, but once it's finalized, we'll talk to the Board of Finance about either allocating that, or some of that or all of that, to possibly the Special Education Reserve, or perhaps allocating it to some smaller capital projects as well.
Any questions for Joe or Ron on that? Okay, and Ron, for, for next year's budget, it panned out after the, after the Board of Finance was a 1, 1,033 deficit?
The...
Of the, of the 1.85 reduction, we wound up with a 1,033?
It was just over a million, yeah.
About, yeah, okay, okay. From our, from our original proposed budget going into next year?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Next is the Special Education update for Jen.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, everyone.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so let's talk about enrollment for the month of June. We didn't have any students who moved in in the month of June, we had five students who were dismissed, and we had a few students out of the five that actually moved out of town, and then we had 13 students who were made eligible for special education services. So that total is 704, so we ended, technically ended the year at 704, so my numbers show 704 for June. You're gonna see 40 less in my July numbers, because we had 40 students that either graduated or aged out. So ultimately, at the end, end of the year, if we look at today, we're at 664 students, district-wide, okay? So looking at financials, the numbers I'm gonna talk about right now are before the budget transfer, but after all of our final invoices came in and our POs were closed, we did, we did end the budget over, we did end the year over budget by $113,000. So we received 1.124 million so far of excess cost money, we are still waiting on another $40,000 that was extra money from a grant, a setaside grant, we were supposed to get that by the end of June, but we haven't gotten it yet, so we expect to get that soon. So that's where we ended for the year. So just when reviewing my numbers, and when I've talked about it all year long, you can see that the financial trends were there, that the most money that we spent this year was in tuition public, tuition private, and also in transportation, and I reported out on that every month, we saw that with the addition of students moving into district, high-cost students moving into district, and with the different changes that we had to make for students' programs that increased numbers. So also with that, as I reported through the year, we saw an increase in students' mental health needs, and we had students who were on homebound tutoring for medical needs, some of them, majority of them were for mental health needs and associated with that, so we had to have teachers tutor them, which costs extra money, and also, we had students who needed to be transported to IOPs, which are intensive outpatient programs. And just for clarity purposes, when I talk about students who are on homebound tutoring, that could be either a typical peer or a student that's supported by an IEP. In addition to that, I also reported out every month that our independent evaluation line was pretty high this year, we did spend a lot of money on that line, we had a lot of students that needed additional evaluations, such as psychiatrics and things of that nature, so that also was one of our bigger, big line, big spending lines. So that's kind of the overview of what I had prepared for today, just to kind of talk about where we are at the end of the year. Does anybody have any questions in regards to that, the trends? Anything about the financials?
Okay.
Did you have a question, Dennis?
No.
Okay. So that's where we are. I will say that we are in, we started week three of ESY this year, we have 160 students in the building, and Marissa and Emily planned the whole entire ESY program, it should have fabulous jobs, so we thank her for that, it's run very, very smoothly, and we have 160 students pre-K through 22 years old, actually, all in the STEM wing, so all has gone very well. So we have this week and next week, and then that will be done for the year.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then summer starts.
Summer starts with Marissa and I at that point, that's true.
For two weeks?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep, just a quick summer work update, there's a lot to report, but I just hit a few highlights. Once again, Dan Croft continues to do an amazing job, him and his whole, his entire team. Lot of work happening in conjunction with, you know, several projects, just to highlight a couple of the bigger ones, you're sitting in one. This was, this was finished about, well, as you can tell, the books aren't back on the shelves yet, so when that's, when they're back up, but this was finished last week, the flooring here, they're gonna be working in Jockey Hollow's library shortly, footings for the press box project have been poured, they did have, that was delayed a bit when they knocked down the old press box, only to find that there were septic galleys underneath the press box, so I don't know who's, who was in charge of, or I don't know what the building codes were back in 19 whatever that was, that they put the press box right on top of the septic galleys, but if you go down there, you'll see there's, there's some concrete structures out there, those are the septic galleys, those will get relocated over to kind of like the right field, right, right field, outfield area there, so, but that project is moving along, the warning track, and the warning track is dug out along with foul ball, I'm sorry, foul poles are dug out for the, for the new fence line with the new dimensions on the field. Both the Masick and Jockey Hollow gym floors are getting prepared to be sanded and refinished this summer, and all this is happening while all the regular stuff goes on, while the, the folks are, you know, cleaning out the rooms, washing the floors, getting ready to wash, strip, and wax the main floors. Again, we are not doing that in every classroom this year, because we did take a hit to some of the, to some of the summer work. And additionally, all that's going on while a couple of our Masick crew members go out now... And all this is happening while all the regular stuff goes on, while the, the folks are, you know, cleaning out the rooms, washing the floors, getting ready to wash, strip and wax the main floors. Again, we are not doing that in every classroom this year because we did take a hit to some of the, to some of the summer work. And additionally, all that's going on while a couple of our Massey crew members go out now, beginning July 1st, and started, you know, doing maintenance on all the, on all the other schools. So we did that as a, as another cost-saving tip. So huge thank you to Dan and his team for all their work there. Two quick things, I just, I, I think we've mentioned it before, but negotiations for teachers are coming up in August. I'm sure Dave will be reaching out for anyone who might be interested in serving on that committee. And then the CAPE CAP conference, there's still an early bird discount if you want to sign up. I have found that the first day is usually a little bit, a little bit more valuable in terms of offerings for both superintendents and board members. So if anyone's interested, it's November 21st and 22nd. Just let myself or Terry still, I don't know.
Any questions for Joe? Okay, we're going to move on. Sheila, you have a presentation? Are you using the board?
Sheila does.
Okay, then I'm going to move over.
Sheila's going to be presenting out on the, on the legislation that was passed last year as it relates to school climate committee. And I just want to make sure that we understand as a, as a group with this, what this legislation means. And basically, the school climate legislation really impacts two things. It impacts our school climate surveys and school climate survey responses and the actions that we do with, with the results that we get from those school climate surveys. A lot of our in-district strategies that we use to improve school climate, that's one piece of it. The other piece, it's the school climate legislation that also dictates the definition, the definition and investigatory process of, of bullying. So you'll see, I think, like midway through Sheila's presentation here, the slides actually changed colors. First half, Sheila's going to be talking a lot about school climate, the school climate committee, who that consists of, what they're charged with, what their job is. And then about halfway through, you'll see the, the slides change color a little bit and it starts talking about what the state is now referring to as challenging behavior and their new definition of bullying. And this is probably the fourth or fifth iteration of, of bullying. And I think the definition's a little problematic, but we'll talk about it when we get there.
Thank you, Joe. And tag team, or any of the administrators here too, want to tag team in on this, that's fine as well. One of the things that the state really kind of put out in the forefront with this is the difference between school climate and school culture. School climate is how you feel, and then the culture is really logistical, how things are run. So a big focus, as Joe mentioned, is on school climate and what that, what that looks like for us. And why does school climate matter? It's about relationships, the learning environment, the emotional well-being, behavior and discipline, student engagement, teacher satisfaction, all of those things that, again, how do you feel? We want to make sure that the people who are in our schools are feeling good about where they are and things that are happening there, and that's all the school climate piece. It's been a process and it'll be an ongoing process for us. We have been doing school climate surveys to parents, to students and to staff for years now. As Joe mentioned, there's been various iterations of not only the bullying piece, but also on the school climate piece through the State Department of Education. And we've worked this past year with Ed Advance, which is the RSC up in Litchfield County. They put together a way of looking at school climate information and created a program that uses AI to analyze the results and help look for patterns. So one of the things we do is, you know, we have that survey go out, we take a look at the results from that. Principals look very carefully at that for their school, make some decision and some goals for things that they're going to do for the following year. The district does that as well. Joe will come up with district goals that are based on this information. Then the school comes up with goals and then the teachers will come up with goals around these things as well. So it's ongoing, it's forever changing and improving and getting better. We're always looking at it and monitoring and seeing what can we work on next. There are kind of two overarching roles. One is the district climate coordinator, and that's the superintendent or designee. That is, I do take on that role for the district. At the school climate specialist, that's the principal in each building, is typically the person who oversees that, or it could be an assistant principal, depending on the building as well. And we have a school climate committee. There's, each school has their own committee, which is a group that's designated to look at things that are going on in the building. We also have a district committee. It's a combined committee with health, safety, school climate and wellness. Dave is actually a member of that committee for the board, and we do talk about school climate and where we are with things with that as well. And there, there's a note that the, after policy tonight, we were taking a look at the policy for this, and the discussion came up where it says at least two members of the school community, as determined by the specialist, that last bullet there, that they would like to add some additional language saying including a Board of Ed member at the discretion of the chair. So that way, we make sure that the board is aware of, you know, the climate results and where things are going. As I mentioned, Dave is on our committee already. The role of the school climate committee is to really help the, take a look at what's going on in the district, what's going on in the building, and then what's going on in the district, making suggestions on how we can make things better. The buildings will be making a school climate improvement plan based on those survey results with the help of that program that I mentioned, that Ed Advance helped us, helped us to work through. And then looking at ways that we can support what's going on in classrooms and in the schools. The plan actually asks that we figure out how we're going to prevent concerns and things going on, how do we identify issues? And then how do we respond to challenging behavior? And that's, you know, basically what the plan is, is going to look like based on the, the results. There's required training that has to go on. We've actually, pre-COVID, we started with the ruler training. I know we've done some presentations to the board over the years on Yale ruler training and how we have mood meters in our schools, so students are talking about their feelings and being able to express the words for what is it that they're feeling. We've had presentations on the next about school climate and talking about MTSS and looking at research-based interventions for our students. Restorative practices, we've had staff who have been trained at, I believe all buildings, there's a handful of staff who have been trained in that the last couple of years. And these are all things that we need to be able to continue to work on and grow, especially as we get new staff. We want to make sure that they're being exposed to these things. Two big changes with this. Now we've changed to-
So the color just changed. So like the first part is all about the school climate plans and who has to be on the committees and the roles of the district climate coordinator and school climate coordinators. Now we get into the new legislative definition of bullying, and you've heard repeatedly now Sheila's talked about challenging behavior. That's kind of this new term being used with the new bullying policy. Bullying is challenging behavior, but challenging behavior is not necessarily just bullying.
Exactly. Good segue. So challenging behavior, as quoted through the statute, is behavior that negatively impacts school climate or interferes or is at risk of interfering with the learning or safety of a student or the safety of a school employee. And that's a challenging behavior. The previous definition that we had for bullying was conduct that is severe, persistent or pervasive. So in order for a bullying investigation to be considered, yes, this is, you know, definitely a bullying situation, it had to have been one of those. The new definition with this new statute, it's unwanted and aggressive behavior among children in grades K through 12 inclusive that involves a real or perceived power imbalance.
So, yeah. I mean, that is a, it is very vague. We have asked for, we have asked for clarifications on what is a real or perceived power imbalance because if it's not a real one, it could be a perceived one. And so, you know, it's really, it's putting us into a, a pretty tricky spot with this stuff, so. Right, it was important that you guys saw what the, what the new definition is. The original definition, I think the first iteration of it was, it was acts that were repeated over time. And I'll just give you my, as a, as a school administrator, my bias to that, to that definition was if you had something that happened once, you could talk to a, a kid and have a really hard conversation about, listen, if this continues, you know, you're going to be identified as a bully. And, you know, 99 times out of 100, you know, it, it really curtailed any kind of behavior. This is, this is a very open-ended, a very difficult definition to, you know, to kind of sort through there.
Sheila, can I ask you a question?
Please.
Joe, does your superintendent's group meet over the summer? Do you Zoom over to summer?
We do.
So what's, what's the whole-
Everybody is saying the same thing right now. Everybody's saying the same thing right now.
And the HR group, we meet over the summer as well. It's basically mostly Fairfield County-
Right.
HRs, directors. The state is offering a training on the 23rd next week to try and help districts, you know, look at it and figure out what it looks like. So I'm definitely going to be listening to that one.
So the state feels they have a, because this is federal policy, yes?
This is federal. Well, this is, excuse me, this is state.
State policy. So the state's going to explain to you what they're, gotcha.
I hope so.
I hope so, right. But it's, it's the idea of it being vague too. Nobody wants to define like-
It's a lawyer's definition.
Right. So we're, we're-
Anything's an imbalance of power. It's an axioma. It's words you can throw out any time to confuse anybody. Life's an imbalance of power, so it's how you look, look at it.
Jerry's got it. Okay, go ahead. And it's not that, you know, listen, we're going to address behavior whenever it happens.
We always have.
My concern with this is what I've seen over and over now is that these types of definitions and processes don't have the intended consequences that they want. And what ends up happening is somebody who files a bullying charge against one kid, then that parent then files a bullying charge against the other kid. And really, what do we want to do? We want to, we want to create an atmosphere where we can either employ some restorative practices, if that's, if that's appropriate given the situation, and get the kids to, you know, to move forward. But this is going to, this is going to make that a little bit more challenging, for sure.
Well, you're always for it too, pervasive.
Yeah, it was. I liked the, like I said, the, the first iteration, which was, you know, acts that are repeated over time was, it gave you a chance to intervene, have an intervention first. This unwanted and aggressive, to me, it could be a one-time, one-time thing.
The other thing the old definition did was help, by definition in and of itself, was help curtail the amount of complaints. No, the amount of complaints. I could see this so open-ended that we're going to have so many complaints.
What's going to landslide?
Administrators, we're going to have to hire a full-time person just to deal with this. So it's another, you know, unfunded mandate.
I know districts who have done that. They hired a, a person to-
Yeah, this is anything and everything. It's just, you know, and kindergartners, anyway.
It's hard. We get, I mean, and listen, inappropriate behavior is inappropriate behavior. We're going to call it out. But there's a lot of times where, you know, especially at these younger grades, you know, K-2, where, you know, a parent will want a bullying charge against kids. And by the time you start to do the bullying investigation, you know, they're sitting at the lunch table, you know, best friends again. They don't-
Yeah, they're just being kids.
Yeah.
As Joe mentioned, challenging behavior, bullying is challenging behavior, but challenging behavior isn't bullying. You know, there's different subsets to challenging behavior. So it's not only bullying, but also assault, harassment, teen dating violence, physical violence and threatening. And that if these behavior, this challenging behavior is considered violent, then we need to have a tiered response on how we're handling it. And-
If last year's numbers are the same as this year's numbers, you already have 20 cases of it with this alternative school by definition. You just defined those kids as being in that segment.
Not necessarily-
When he described those kids that are in his program, that certainly seemed like they hit the criteria that is broad as that.
Yeah, I wouldn't generalize it.
I wouldn't generalize that to being, to being challenging behavior.
Okay.
So part of the tiered response is that the district, you know, in, in the improvement plans that the schools will be working on, they have to have protocols and supports and things set up so that if a situation happens, what is their multi-tiered response in order to meet that? So depending on the, the behavior, they might need to temporarily clear a classroom or at least a majority of the students from the classroom because you want to make sure that the child who's having the behavior is not going to hurt themselves or others. If there is, obviously you're going to get medical attention brought right in. If it gets really violent, then, you know, there's always the question on how far does something go and, and do we need to bring in more supports? There are a specific kind of first offense, second offense piece with, and this is what the district will be working on as we work through this whole process this year of this new legislation. So first offense, obviously, is getting in touch with the parents of the child. Second offense, inviting the parents of the students in to discuss supports and interventions and how we're able to support them in that restorative practice piece. And if there's multiple offenses or that single one is just so severe, then it's really looking for more outside supports. Is it a 2-1-1 call? Is it looking for a program? You know, those types of things. We have a challenging behavior reporting form that is part of the policy that does give students, parents or staff employees the opportunity to write up any challenging behavior, which would then go to administration, then it would, an investigation would follow, and then information will be shared out to families within a few days after completion of the investigation.
Sheila's glossing it over, and we could go through, and I could share, maybe, and we can review, but it's like, it's very dictated. Once you get the form, you have X amount of days to acknowledge, receiving the form, start the investigation. There's no, I don't think there's any necessary specific deadline on the investigation, although you're supposed to do it in all reasonable, you know, haste. And then, you know, how quickly then, once it is, once a conclusion is met, how quickly to meet with the, you know, the victim's family, with the alleged perpetrator's family. So it's all very statutorily dictated there.
Is that always done with a duet, or is that always the same?
No, it's, it's, they're separate, yeah.
No, people, people giving the parents education and what's going on. Is that a single person relaying that information, or is that done with two people?
It depends.
Because he always complains that we, I didn't get feedback.
Yeah.
But you did get feedback, you just didn't accept the feedback.
Yeah.
So the question is, do you have somebody else witnessing that feedback?
You know, a lot of times at the elementary level, it's the principal meeting with, meeting with the, with the family, so it's just-
He doesn't have a vice principal.
Stop rubbing it in.
Joe, sorry, I didn't mean to-
Go ahead.
As far as the tiered responses go, how often do you, do we implement these? Or what were we doing before versus is, is the tiered response is going to be something that's new?
No, I mean, nothing to put you on the spot, Steve, but, you know, it's the only principal in the audience, but-
Yeah, no, not really. I think the second offense, you know, we would always invite the parents in if they wanted, even on the first.
So something we're already doing?
You know, I think there's more paperwork and I think what's going to increase is the, the change in the definition is going to bury us in paperwork.
That's a coincidence.
That, that's, that's the change. I don't think, like Joe said, we always address the challenging behavior, bullying, et cetera. But now it kind of forces us, everything's pretty much going to require this form and the best, you know, it, it put us under the gun. We could be running five or six of them at a time and making sure we're adhering to all of them.
Just, just so we can kind of refer back to this change, do, I mean, is there any way for you to kind of let us know how many district-wide we had to deal with this year?
Yes, we have to report that, so yeah, so yeah, that'll be very telling, Joe.
So we can compare to, yeah, 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 right.
It'll eventually say what it is this year and next year.
Yep.
And here's a time, sorry, is there a time element with that?
There is.
First, first offense was as a freshman, second offense was as a senior?
No, I, is there a stat, I don't, I don't-
Good question.
I didn't go into the weeds that far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bring the weeds up.
Yeah.
I think it could happen freshman year and, and between the same two kids, happen junior year and still be the second offense.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
These are clarity.
And that would be now.
And that would be now, too.
Right, that's, that's not a change.
The big change is really the, the change in what they're calling bullying or challenging behavior.
Challenging behavior.
Right. So there's-
I'm sorry, when you give us that report, can we get it by school?
We should be able to, or at least if not, I'll give it to you by breakdown of grade K-5s.
Grade, yeah, because of, you know, emotional changes, you know.
Yep. So there's a difference between that tiered response as well as restorative practices, which I, term I mentioned earlier. The tiered- The tiered response is required that any time a student displays that challenging behavior, that meets the definition, and you see in quotes, that's straight from statute, requiring temporary clearing of a classroom, you need to have that tiered, that first tier, second tier, third. Restorative practices may be used for incidents of challenging behavior or student conflict that is, again, in quotes, statute, nonviolent or does not constitute a crime. And then if you come to what is exactly restorative practices, the definition of that is evidence and research-based system of practices that focus on building high-quality constructive relationships among the school community, holding each student accountable for any challenging behavior, and ensuring each student has a role in repairing relationships and reintegrating into the school community. So it's restorative, you know, trying to bring it all back together. And that's kind of the basis of those two. As Joe mentioned, there's kind of two pieces with this legislation. There's the school climate piece and the challenging behavior piece.
The challenging behavior, regardless of whether or not, I know we wanted to get this on the, on the agenda as quickly as possible because we have this, we've already, July 1, we have to start using the new regulations for, for bullying and the new processes and whatnot. So we wanted to get this on the agenda as quickly as possible.
And you're getting this, Joe, this July 23?
There's a training that I'm doing July 23, but then there's been other ones. We had a bunch of principals went to an overview of this. Steve, I think you, were you a part of that?
So enforce it on the first and learn about it on the 23rd. Thank you, Steve.
Well, it's been, this was something that was passed.
It came out last year.
It was passed last year. You had by September, July 1.
But they don't find it on the 23rd.
Yeah, I know, it would have been nice to see, yeah.
Yeah, and they've done some other training. We had a bunch of principals went to training earlier in May, towards the end of May, just trying to help people understand what it is and get their policy together.
Yes. Good luck.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
One housekeeping note, Alan is not here tonight, our secretary, so Jerry, would you be acting secretary for tonight?
Sure.
Thank you very much. I just want to make that official. We have no unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business, which is approval of the proposed year-end budget transfers. Can I have a motion to approve the proposed year-end budget transfers as presented at tonight's meeting? Christine, second. Jerry? Whoop, Dennis?
Dennis.
Okay, Dennis, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. Motion passes. We're going to move to B, policy first review. Christine, this is what was discussed at the policy committee tonight, and this is going to, I want to make sure the board understands, this is going to include the, the one language change that the policy committee-
Correct.
-recommended, so we're moving forward with that, correct?
Yep.
All right. I know you guys are on policy. Dennis, you're good with that? Okay. Any questions or further comments on that? I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting?
No, the only comment that I'd have is that the survey results that we'd be included in, the results of the survey.
Agreed.
That's it. I don't think we have been in the past, and I think it's-
It's a good thing.
Yeah, definitely.
I, I think the new legislation actually, it requires, to the, that I would put back to the board.
So I remember when I was a teacher, I used to sit in the audience, and the board would bring up the climate study, go into executive session, talk about it, so at least the board members knew. And we didn't hear it, you know, as an audience, but you guys did. So when Jeff brought it up, I'm, I'm off it. We need to know, not who wrote what, it's anonymous, but just what they're saying is so important.
Yeah, yeah. And Sheila, as far as in your presentation about a member, a board member for the committee, I do feel it's important to have a separate and distinct member on that, on the climate committee versus me being on the health, health and safety, the over, overbroad committee. So when do you need somebody there for August, September?
Well, that meeting is the same. It's the health, safety. Oh, so you want somebody in addition to yourself?
No, is there-
It's not a separate meeting.
Okay, okay, all right, then, no, all right, then we're good.
But it is, each building has their own.
Each building has their own, and those I don't-
They all come to this, to our meeting?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, I didn't know if you were looking for a separate subcommittee of, okay, all right.
Just part of that meeting.
Okay.
We were afraid that if we all left and new, new members came about, that we wouldn't have some kind of representation on the committee for the funding. I mean, Jeff brought up a good point.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a whole section of funding in there, and we're in charge of funding.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to overspeak you, but that is what, I mean, we're-
Right.
It deals with two things that we're responsible for.
Right. So we just felt sort of a representation, like you're on safety, that's why you're part of it.
Right.
But if it's, if you're not here anymore, it's not specified anymore. So that's why we want it more.
Yeah, no, I would, I would, I would-
We could talk about it.
I would always want a board member on that committee, no matter what. I mean, it just, it's everything.
Yeah, just wanted to write answer.
That, yeah, that's all we wanted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's additional, not taking away from the two members in the committee.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep.
And what's the teacher component of that? Any?
Oh, yeah. There's teachers in every building.
Okay, no, but I mean, for the committee?
On, on the committee, there are teachers, I, yes.
Teacher building, okay.
Yep.
The SROs.
The SROs, and then I also-
Principals.
Principals or assistant principals, SROs, I have, I have paras, I have classroom teachers, I have special ed teachers, I have reading people.
Dave York, we have certain, yeah.
Yep, and then I have cert-
Monroe police.
I have Monroe, I have the police, I have Bill Dabbin, I have fire. It's a pretty comprehensive group.
Yeah, it's a big-
It's a big group.
Yeah.
Before we, before we adjourn, I know, and I feel bad because I know the alternative program wasn't on the agenda for tonight, and I know there were some very passionate people here to talk about that, and they've had some, they've had some great experiences. And as you can tell, I know, you know, a number of them. I think there is a little, you know, I don't want to be disingenuous and say that the standalone program is going to stay because it's not, and we've been pretty forward with that. The core programming that the folks have developed is really, is really strong. And if we want to come back and revisit what that's going to look like, I know they're meeting again next week, and, but the core program of what they're calling the academy, they're going to have a block in the middle of the day, our period's three through six. So basically, the middle of the day is going to be Pat and Victor specifically in those rooms. Kids can self-select if they want to be in the academy all day, or if they want to be integrated and, you know, go to class. It's not, our goal is to get kids to be in the academy, but then to start to take, you know, especially where they have interest, if they have, you know, interest in culinary or art, or whatever the cases may be. So, you know, again, I don't want to be disingenuous and say it's a standalone program. It's not, it's not anymore. But the core programming of, of instruction is going to be very similar to what it, to what it is, and-
The same individuals, too, right?
The same individuals. We also are going to have some of our special education teachers also, also working with those students, which I think-
I'll use myself.
Shield.
If Jerry Stevens is in the alt program as a freshman, all day, whatever all day is, because alt's not in all day, are they?
Last year, they were not, not necessarily.
Okay, so Jerry Stevens as a freshman is in alt, and Jerry's mother and father want him as a sophomore in alt, Jerry can still stay in alt.
He stays in alt. And we're meeting, we're having individual-
Junior, senior?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we're having, we're having, those are conversations that the guidance counselors are having with the kids, with the parents, that, hey, do you want to be in the academy all day? Do you want to be, do you want to test waters? You really enjoy this particular subject? Do you want to, do you want to try this?
Joe, this hit home for us. You and I know a lot of these people.
Absolutely.
I understand what you're saying, and I know the job is to always get out there and integrate, but there are just some of us that can't.
That won't, yeah.
That no matter how much you push, we can't integrate. And I mean, it was obvious, and it's obvious how important it is.
I think the hardest transition was going from an outside school to in here to begin with. They're still getting over that.
I agree with you.
So now it's like, now my whole world's shaken up. It's like, that clarity wasn't known, I don't think, to the audience that we're speaking, that the program still exists.
I, I agree with you, which is what, no, no, I, I agree with you. I agree with you a thousand percent with that. I don't think they understood that it was the most-
I don't think it was conveyed to them.
And I don't want anyone to think, you know, nobody, you know, anyone doesn't care about anyone.
Oh, oh, my God.
That is not the case.
Unless they're taking a-
It's been a very, I know-
Did we have minutes that Trumble had done away with theirs from an Alan question? An answer to Alan's question that Trumble did away with their program?
Trumble did do away with their program.
Right, right, but I think it was in our minutes.
My son-in-law teaches that program.
It was in our minutes about that. So maybe that's where the takeoff is.
Maybe. I just know that, you know, Steve, Lisa Peterson, Ian Law, I have, you know, they've thought about it very hard, and they're kind of, and even the programming that they developed, you know, we sat down with the, with the alternative school teachers, and that has even morphed a little bit more and, you know, to try to reflect a lot of that core programming. The, the words I kept writing down as kids were talking were, you know, feeling seen, feeling safe, feeling supported, that's what we need, that's the environment that we need to create.
But that's what they all need.
Absolutely.
So that's why I was going to ask you, whether one of those two are on the committee.
I guess.
I don't think they-
No.
No, I don't think either of them are. I've got different people from the high school, though.
Right, but if, I mean, it seems like they're sweet spot, this type of behavior, and why aren't they correcting it? So could, could we add them, could you have one of the two teachers who have lived their life doing this on the committee?
Possibly, if they're interested, yeah, I don't know.
It's a consideration, yeah.
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 I mean, I just, you know, as a former educator, and all of us are here for the same reason, you know, we, we all care and worry, I just, I worry that some of what they've said, some way or another, could happen. I'm afraid if we're saying that Jerry can be in alt that is a freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, that maybe that's not true, that why are we, I understand why we're all for them, everyone, I have no problem with them. I just want to make sure that that core group, and come on, guys, I, when I was hired in '79, across my hallway was alt ed. And I told Johnny Batista, I was John's mentor when he got hired. So I, alt ed is near and dear to my heart. And for, I just need them to understand that we do care, and that this is going to be watered down. I guess I hate to throw that word out, but I'm going to say it.
But it's a change of the program, not a cancellation of the program.
Yeah, that's, I think-
I understand, but as we change it, change the flavor of Coke, did people like it? They changed back to Coke. Are we watering it down as we change it? I guess that's my issue.
That's why I'm leaning towards, if we care so much, the two people who've been driving that program have meant so much for those students, and this is a program designed around that behavior, you know? So they help define how we're going to deal with these kids. I mean, I, I'm not an educator, I don't, you know, I'm not playing your sandbox, but it seems like they have a good understanding of the different, I mean, coming to school is tough for some. Okay, that's an issue. You're still going to make them come to school, all right? But all those other diverse personal issues that need one-on-one intervention, they can still have through this program. But, you know, that kind of got lost, that they're going to, you know, they're going to be lost to just thrown back into school. That's not how it's designed.
How is it communicated out, that it felt?
Well, there's some miscommunication in there, there's some correct communication there.
Right, but I'm saying, how is it communicated?
But let me, hold on a second, let me, let me pull back a little bit now, because we, as a board, we heard a presentation by the administration, it was accepted by senior administration, and we approved that plan. Obviously, we do care about all the kids, and there, there's no doubt, and there's great success stories, staff are great.